Slide which is our current definition of accessory building, accessory use. And there it says accessory buildings shall not be larger than the main or principal building. That's an existing regulation right now in the existing definitions, so we didn't change that. So it's always the accessory building has to be incidental to and smaller than the main or principal building.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And what we're doing is we're also clarifying in this definition, taking some of the language that you saw crossed out in the matrix and moving it into the definition where we believe it's more appropriate. So we're adding what's in red here. It says that no accessory building shall be constructed upon a lot until construction of the principal building has commenced, and no accessory building shall be placed in a front yard. These already exist. We just added them, moved them here from a different location. So you can't build your storage building before you build your principal building. And it has to be in a side or rear yard. Again, these are existing standards. So there was a whole bunch of stuff about accessory buildings in a section of the code 1836-020 called Lot Area. Very difficult paragraph to read. We took a lot of these standards and just took them out of this section and moved them to the appropriate zone district. So you'll see things crossed out here. It says, for instance, that a minimum four-foot clearance is maintained between buildings, and that it has to be four feet from the rear and side lot line. Same standards, we just moved them to the zone districts that they are applicable to. So that was crossed out. One of the changes that resulted in changes throughout the municipal code was a review of the use of the word setback versus the use of the word yard. Yard is old planning terminology that was used and comes with our municipal code that has been in existence since the mid-sixties. And over time, it has become confusing in its application. Oftentimes, it was mixed up with the setback. This image shows you the difference between what a yard is and what a setback is. So for instance, you would have a front setback that is 25 feet. For most zone districts, that's a pretty typical setback. It varies for commercial zones, and commercial zones it might be 10 feet or something else. But in a residential zone where you're building a house, a front setback is 25 feet. That setback has to be unobstructed and clear of any buildings or anything that would obstruct the setback. A yard, on the other hand, like a front yard, is measured from the property line all the way to the front of the building. So when we say an accessory building has to be in a side yard or a rear yard, it has to be totally within a side yard or a rear yard. It has to be either to the side of the building or behind the building. And certainly, you know, the side setbacks, it would have to meet the setback that exists on the side, whether it's four feet or whether it's 25 feet or whether it's 10 feet, and it all depends on the zone district. So again, we moved the setback restrictions to the applicable restrictions that are in the zone district.
Question.
Uh huh.
Could you outline then what is defined as the front yard?
In this example, the front yard would be measured or would be defined as from the property line, this arc here, all the way to the front of the building. So everything that's in yellow is the front yard. Everything that's got this dotted teal and yellow is what I would interpret as the side yard. And everything that's in this green is the rear yard.
Okay.
Okay? And so this is the front setback to that line, whether it's 25 feet, and these are the side setbacks, four feet. And the rear setback here is shown at 25 feet, I believe.
Laurie, I have a question. Does yard, the definition of yard, only apply to residential zoning or does that also apply to ...?
It applies to all zone districts.
So a commercial lot would also have a front yard?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So a lot of the changes we made dealt with what is setback versus what is yard, and so that's why you're seeing all these little piecemeal changes throughout the entire municipal code. And it is confusing, but that term is used throughout the municipal code. So generally, these proposed changes allow for accessory buildings outside of setbacks in non-residential zones, where they right now are not currently allowed or addressed by the municipal code. We also clarify setbacks for accessory buildings in residential zones and in the commercial zones as well, and we clarify setbacks and yards, these terms throughout the municipal code. So why did staff take this up? This has been on our books for many years, and we are now getting to it. It addresses a need. We often have inquiries from both residences, residential properties, and from commercial properties that have expressed a desire to put in accessory buildings. They need the extra storage area. So it is a need that we've identified and are trying to address and remediate through this amendment. We are applying existing standards. So the standards that existed, whether a setback is four feet or more or less, are the existing standards that exist, and they would apply to accessory buildings. We are also looking that, we are hoping that this change throughout the entire municipal code will simplify and clarify these regulations that deal with accessory buildings. And don't forget that our primary reason is to allow for accessory buildings in commercial zone districts where currently they are not. We do believe there is a need for this extra storage, and that it's more accessible to many of these businesses to build a storage shed compared to the cost and expense of expanding a building for that extra storage. So this is a more affordable option for many businesses. And we are following existing historic development patterns. Some of the images that I showed you, show you sheds that have been put up, that exist throughout our commercial area. Now, a potential disadvantage is that all these little sheds may create clutter. We've tried to mitigate that to the extent that we're pushing them to the rear or the side where they're more hidden. And we're also limiting the number of accessory buildings you can have to two. And again, all of our architectural standards apply to sheds, just like they apply to the principal building. It has to harmonize with the neighborhood, it has to harmonize with the principal building, it has to harmonize with the commercial zone district. So we think that we've addressed the clutter issue with these types of limitations. So staff does recommend that council approve ordinance number 1300, Series 2017, as proposed in your packets. And for your information, also included in your packet was the Planning Commission minutes from their meeting on February 23rd, where they had a lengthy discussion on these regulation revisions, and finally made a motion of recommendation to council for your consideration to approve ordinance number 1300 as proposed. That concludes my presentation tonight. Are there any questions of staff?
Council.
Well? I've got a couple. One of your limitations you've set the maximum to for accessory buildings, as far as you know at this point, does this impact anybody? Does somebody have three, or have you had any public comments coming through planning that ...?
Yes, we know of some instances where there are more than two, and this code amendment will not address those. Those are grandfathered, they're in, we're not going to retroactively require that they be removed.
So I had an extensive meeting with the city planner and planning director over the last couple of weeks about this, so I've kind of clarified most of my questions I have. I sort of want to ask this question as a prompt. Some people have been concerned about the stables and being included in this. What I learned was this is all bookkeeping reincorporation. Maybe you could reiterate what you told me today?
Certainly. There's one of our housekeeping, labeled as housekeeping changes, where we added an entire section dealing with stables, dealing with horses, not just horses, but stables. And that's on page six of nine, section 1833-148. We're reinserting this into the code. In the mid-'90s, we went through an extensive code revision that dealt with horses, dealt with stables, and what it did was allow for non-conforming stables within the city to continue to exist. It made, that section of the code then made reference to standards, these standards, and for some reason, unknown to all the planners throughout time, this section, these standards that dealt with stables was omitted. It wasn't part of the code, was not codified. So here we are, having a section in the code that is codified that refers to these standards, and we can't find them in the code. So this is reinserting what was codified in the past, somehow got omitted from putting reinsertion into the code. We're just reinserting what already existed.
And it was verbatim, so nothing's changed, it's just some editor took it out.
Thanks, John.
You mentioned that the accessory buildings need to be harmonized was the word you used with the primary building. Does that mean if the primary building is finished in stucco, that the accessory unit has to be finished in stucco?
Not necessary to that detail, but it has to look like it belongs with all the other buildings that are on the site. So it may not have to be stucco, but it could be a similar color, it could be a similar style, it could be a smaller miniature of the principal, you know. It doesn't necessarily have to be stucco, but it has to look like it belongs with the principal building.
So that will be a subjective decision?
It is, subject to interpretation, which we will go through with the applicant when they submit their zoning development permit.
All right, thank you.
Laurie, the downside to me clearly is the clutter. And I just imagine all these accessory buildings, which I'm sure is not going to happen, but what was the, what was the meeting like? What was, what were the disadvantages that were talked about? Anything that we should know about? Was this clutter a big discussion point?
Well, in the Planning Commission minutes, they went into a little bit of discussion, and we had about three work sessions on these regulation changes with the Planning Commission before we even got to a point where they were ready and willing to vote on it. So there was a lengthy discussion on clutter and what it meant and how we could control it. And it ended up coming to, it was the Planning Commission's recommendation to put a limit on the number of accessory buildings. So that was definitely emanating from Planning Commission discussions. And then, you know, we reassured them that the zoning development permit allows us to, staff, to control architecturally what these accessory buildings will look like. And there are other limitations that control, like the setbacks, for instance, on a lot. Many commercial lots are so small because they were planted in the 1800s that they couldn't even put an accessory building on them. And if they can, it will be one of these small, little tiny sheds like Dana's Dance that you saw, the illustration of, for instance. That's about as much as they can put. Each lot has a requirement for open space, so you couldn't cover a lot with accessory buildings, for instance.
Well, it's a nice advantage for the businesses too, for sure. No question about that. Okay, that's great. Council, we have a few folks that are signed up to chat about this in the public hearing. Why don't we do that? And we'll come back to us. Jerry Good, would you like to come forward? I haven't seen you up here in a couple of weeks, Jerry.
I'm on medication.
You're on medication? Hey, share it with us.
The whole world. Guys, I'm sorry, this isn't my favorite place to be, but my name's Jerry Good. I reside at 1005 Sun Valley Drive. I'm also a business owner. I own Williams Log Cabin Furniture.
Thank you.
Does that work any better? Listen, the reason I'm here to talk is that while I'm grateful that Planning Department has found a way to allow us to have sheds, I think in essence, it's a little bit of a double talk.
Defined as the front yard.
In this example, the front yard would be measured or would be defined as from the property line, this arc here, all the way to the front of the building. So everything that's in yellow is the front yard. Everything that's got this dotted teal and yellow is what I would interpret as the side yard, and everything that's in this green is the rear yard.
Okay.
Okay, and so this, this is the front setback to that line, whether it's 25 feet or, and these are the side setbacks, four feet, and the rear setback here is shown at 25 feet, I believe.
Laura, I have a question. Does yard, the definition of yard only apply to residential zoning? Or does that also apply to...
It applies to all zone districts.
So a commercial lot would also have a front yard?
Yes. Okay. So a lot of the changes we made dealt with what is setback versus what is yard, and so that's why you're seeing all these little piecemeal changes throughout the entire municipal code, and it is confusing, but that term is used throughout the municipal code. So generally, these proposed changes allow for accessory buildings outside of setbacks in non-residential zones, where they right now are not currently allowed or addressed by the municipal code. We also clarify setbacks for accessory buildings in residential zones and in, in the commercial zones as well, and we clarify setbacks and yards, these terms throughout the municipal code. So why did staff take this up? This has been on our books for many years, and we are now getting to it. It addresses a need. We often have inquiries from both residences, residential properties, and from commercial properties that have expressed a desire to put in accessory buildings. They need the extra storage area. So it is a need that we've identified and are trying to address and remediate through this amendment. We are applying existing standards. So the standards that existed, whether a setback is four feet or more or less, are the existing standards that exist, and they would apply to accessory buildings. We are also looking that, that, we are hoping that this change throughout the entire municipal code will simplify and clarify these regulations that deal with accessory buildings. And don't forget that our primary reason is to allow for accessory buildings in commercial zone districts where currently they are not. We do believe there is a need for this extra storage, and that it's more accessible to many of these businesses to build a storage shed compared to the cost and expense of expanding a building for that extra storage. So this is a more affordable option for many businesses. And we are following existing historic development patterns. Some of the images that I showed you, show you sheds that have been put up, that exist throughout our commercial area. Now, a potential disadvantage is that all these little sheds may create clutter. We've tried to mitigate that to the extent that we're pushing them to the rear or the side where they're more hidden, and we're also limiting the, the number of accessory buildings you can have to two. And again, all of our architectural standards apply to sheds, just like they apply to the principal building. It has to harmonize with the neighborhood, has to harmonize with the principal building, has to harmonize with the commercial zone district. So we think that we've addressed the clutter issue with these types of limitations. So staff does recommend that council approve ordinance number 1300, Series 2017, as proposed in your packets. And for your information also included in your packet was the planning commission minutes from their meeting on February 23rd, where they had a lengthy discussion on these regulation revisions, and finally made a motion of recommendation to council for their, your consideration to approve ordinance number 1300, as proposed. That concludes my presentation tonight. Are there any questions of staff?
Counselor.
Well?
Uh, I've got a couple. Um, one of your limitations you've set the maximum to for accessory buildings, um, as far as you know at this point, does this impact anybody? Does somebody have three, or have you had any public comments coming through planning that...
Yes, we, we know of some instances where there are more than two, and this code amendment will not address those. Those are grandfathered. They're in. We're not going to retroactively require that they remove them.
So, um, I had an extensive meeting with the city planner and planning director over the last couple of weeks about this, so I've kind of clarified most of my questions I have. Uh, I, I sort of want to ask this question as a prompt. Some people have been concerned about the stables and being included in this. Uh, what I learned was, uh, this is all bookkeeping, reincorporation. Uh, maybe you could reiterate what you told me today?
Certainly.
Wouldn't mind, please?
There's one of our housekeeping, labeled as housekeeping changes, where we added an entire section dealing with stables, dealing with horses, not just horses, but stables, and that's on page six of nine, Section 1833-148. We're reinserting this into the code. In the mid 90s, we went through an extensive code revision that dealt with horses, dealt with stables, and what it did was allow for non-conforming stables within the city to continue to exist. It made, that section of the code then made reference to standards, these standards, and for some reason, unknown to all the planners throughout time, um, this section, these standards that dealt with stables was omitted. It wasn't part of the code, was not codified. So here we are, having a section in the code that is codified, that refers to these standards, and we can't find them in the code. So this is reinserting what was codified in the past, somehow got omitted from putting reinsertion into the code. We're just reinserting what already existed.
And, and it was verbatim, so it's, nothing's changed. It's just some editor took it out.
Thanks, John.
You mentioned that the accessory buildings need to be harmonized was the word you used with the primary building. Does that mean if the primary building is finished in stucco, that the accessory unit has to be finished in stucco?
Not necessary to that detail, but it has to look like it belongs with all the other buildings that are on the site. So it may not have to be stucco, but it could be a similar color, it could be a similar style, it could be a s- a smaller miniature of the principal, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be stucco, but it has to look like it belongs with the principal building.
So that will be a subjective decision?
It, it is, subject to interpretation, which we will go through with the applicant when they submit their zoning development permit.
All right. Thank you.
Laura, the, the downside to me clearly is the clutter, and I just imagine all these accessory buildings, which I'm sure is not going to happen, but what was the, what was the meeting like? What was, what were the, the disadvantages that were talked about? Anything that, that we should know about? I mean, was this clutter a big discussion point?
Well, in, in the planning commission minutes, they went into a little bit of discussion, and we had about three work sessions on these regulation changes with the planning commission before we even got to a point where they were ready and willing to vote on it. So there was a lengthy discussion on clutter and what it meant and how we could control it. And it ended up coming to, it was the planning commission's recommendation to put a limit on the number of accessory buildings. So that was definitely emanating from the planning commission discussions. Um, and then, you know, we reassured them that the zoning development permit allows us to, staff, to control architecturally what these accessory buildings will look like. Um, and there are other limitations that control, like the setbacks, for instance, on a lot. Um, many commercial lots are so small because they were planted in the 1800s that they couldn't even put an accessory building on them. And if they can, it will be one of these small, little tiny sheds like Dana's Dance that you saw, the illustration of, for instance. That's about as much as they could put. Each lot has a requirement for open space, so you couldn't cover a lot with accessory buildings, for instance.
Well, it's a nice advantage for the businesses too, for sure. No question about that. Okay, that's great. Um, council, we have a few folks that are signed up to chat about this in the public hearing. Why don't we do that, and we'll come back to us. Uh, Jerry Good, would you like to come forward? I haven't seen you up here in a couple of weeks, Jerry.
You're on medication? Hey, share it with us.
The whole room.
Guys, I'm sorry. I'm, this isn't my favorite place to be, but, um, my name's Jerry Good. I reside at 1005 Sun Valley Drive. Um, I'm also a business owner. I own Williams Log Cabin Furniture, and...
Thank you.
Um, does that work any better? Um, listen, um, the reason I'm here to talk is that while I'm grateful that, uh, planning department has, uh, found a way to allow us to have sheds, um, I think in essence, it, it's a little bit of a double talk. Um, I've got three sheds on my property that I've put in in the last seven years. Um, I was able to do that. I just bought a new piece of property over on Boundary, and I bought it with intent to be able to expand, put some more storage on, uh, for my business. These current rules, I can't do that. They, I, I feel they're restrictive. There, uh, there's only a few instances in town that, um, would be affected. I seem to have a couple of them in my possession. Um, there, uh, let's see, I'm gonna, I wanna, I wanna point out that, you know, none of us like excessive government, and I believe that's, uh, true with us all. I, I don't think that we should promote too much interference with commerce from the government. I think that, that you need to let us be able to make a living, guys. Um, they're, uh, yeah, they're, they're taking away our ability to use our property as, as we can. Um, they're, uh, taking the way the number of, of buildings that we can put on, the location, they're restricting. Um, and if you have no back area to construct a building, then, and, but you have a ton in the front, like Williams', uh, you can't do it, you know? If, uh, you, uh, I also was told that if, if we had, uh, storage concerns, if we needed more space, that basically I should consider relocating, moving to a different spot. I don't like that. I didn't like that at all. Um, I, I think the planning needs to work for us, not against us. Um, I, I just spent $400,000 on this building over on Boundary. I can't use it, um, to the way I wanted to be able to use it. Um, their insult to injury now is that they're trying to make the sheds under 120 square foot in a commercial property, uh, where it has to be permitted. That is huge, uh, cost expense because a commercial permit requires B licensed commercial contractors. It also requires architectural engineering. Um, that will escalate the price so that, um, you have to have a lot of money. And I know a lot of people think us small businesses are loaded. We're not, you know? We're giant, we're barely trying to make it. Um, we're, uh, let's see. I, I wanna finish up by saying that this is a bad plan. It has the potential to harm our ability to conduct, uh, our commerce properly. I would like you to tell the planning that it's a nice try, but to go back to the table, come up with something less restrictive and more business friendly. I, I think the big issues are nothing in front and limited it to two. Why, why do you need that? Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
I have a question for Laura, before the next speaker comes up. Laura, as the code exists today, no accessory buildings were permissible in the commercial zone, correct?
Correct. They're blank in the matrix right now.
And they are not permitted?
Right.
Thank you.
And...
Go ahead, Paul.
What is there is, is grandfathered.
Yes.
And if a building wants to be larger than 120 square feet, certainly the tough sheds, the buildings that they are now building, which are bigger than 120 and 200 square feet, certainly meet the architectural standards if they, they didn't, they have many designs. They certainly could possibly meet the architectural standards without going into a whole bunch of it. And if a business wants to build a building that's bigger than 120 square feet, understand you need to get a permit if you were going to build it on the site and not buy one already pre-built and brought to the site. Understand all that. But they could do that by going through the permit process.
Yes. A building permit is required for anything over 120 square feet, whether it's prefab or not.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
John?
What specifically prohibits then Jerry from doing something along the lines that he discussed with us?
Well, Jerry, Mr. Good did come in and speak with the planning director and myself, and we spoke, we spoke specifically about his lot on Boundary. Um, and like many commercial developments, it's complicated. It happens to be a site that is zoned commercial, but is a residential used property. Um, there's nothing that would prevent him from building sheds. If he doesn't want to get a building permit, the shed has to be less than 120 square feet, and he can go ahead and do that with just a zoning development permit. I don't know that that would suit his needs and what he was thinking of for his storage capacity. A couple of, uh, 120 square foot sheds in a commercial zone doesn't give you a lot of storage space, probably not enough compared to what he would need. He can add on to the residence. Um, again, that's more expensive, definitely would require a, a building permit. Um, or he can redesign his lot, his, um, furniture business and expand in the front or, without having to put sheds on, and, and, or he could purchase a lot elsewhere in the city that has the capacity for more storage to suit his needs. Again, not cheap, expensive, but possible. He's, he's got options. The lot he has right now is complicated, and it's, it's got issues. But you can put sheds on that lot. It's just, they would have to be small.
How much storage space were you looking for, Jerry?
Jerry, I'm sorry. Um, if, you're gonna have to come up here, just so everybody can hear you that's not in this room. You got up here faster the second time. Sorry.
Um, the, the issue's not the size. There's an existing eight by eight shed on the property that was there. If I'm allowed two sheds, um, on the property, there's only, already one there. It does not give me the room. It's a half an acre lot. Uh, half of that property is wide open space. It would, uh, I'm not, uh, 120 square foot, I'm fine. But they're also wanting to take that 120 square foot and make us permit it. So there's two whammies there that, that just are not, um, it, it, it makes it unworkable. Um, I'm not trying to cheat. I'm not trying, it's, that existed before tonight. I would have been able to go and put a couple of 120 square foot sheds on that property. I would have asked for a location certificate, just like I did on the others. Now, I would not be able to do that. And if you count the detached garage off the back as a building, I could build no more sheds on that property. And I don't think it's right that you, you can tell me I can't do that, you know? So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay.
We need, there's a couple of clarifications, though, Laura. I'd like for you to make reference the, the ability at this very moment to put sheds on that property versus what could be allowed should this is passed.
Right.
And then also speak to the issue of the permits that he said he would have to get a permit. Define what would be required and what isn't necessary for the different options, please.
Okay. So, um, Mr. Good did mention that there's a garage on the property. That is considered an accessory building. He also mentioned that there's a shed on the garage, and that is an accessory building. He's in a commercial zone. He's reached his limit right there, because you can only have two accessory buildings. He could expand those accessory buildings. You know, the garage could be almost up to as big as the house, just not bigger than the house, according to our current standards for what an accessory building is. So he could expand the garage, increase his storage. He could expand that shed. Now, to expand that shed, anything over 120 square feet would require a zoning development permit and a building permit. Same thing with changes to the garage. He has options. It's just that they're expensive. It's expensive to get a building permit application and to go through a building permit process in a commercial zone. It's expensive in a residential zone, too. Getting a building permit is expensive.
Did that cover what you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sean.
Yes, just, just to note that he does have many options. If the garage were attached to the house, which it is very close and wouldn't be hard to enclose his breezeway and attach the garage, then it would be an attached structure to the house, and he'd have an open option to put another storage facility on the property. And I do want to clarify that Mr. Good is saying that building permits are being considered for less than 120 square feet. This code does not change the building code right now. It was the planning commission who had a discussion and referred back to the board of review to perhaps discuss whether building permits should be required for something less than 120 square feet. It's not something that staff supports, uh, and I rather doubt that the board of review would support that.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay, um, John DeVoe, would you like to come forward?
Counsel, mayor, staff. John DeVoe, 940 East Kelly's Road. I come as chairman of the planning commission, okay? We had two work sessions. The only person that came, and even during our regular hearing, that objected to it was Mr. Good. The vote was seven to one, uh, to pass this on you folks. Two things. Things that make, one of the things that we have so strong in this community is called design standards. Okay? Remember when we built Walmart for those folks that were here then? That's the one thing Cal Rush Springs did not have. So we got a building that looks pretty darn good as far as Walmart's standard, Walmart's standards are. Um, remember also, in the two accessory dwelling buildings, they only have to be smaller than the main building. So you could put a building, if you had a 2,000 square foot house, you could put an 1,800 square foot building. In fact, you put two of them because it's not aggregate. Why in the world would you build 120 square feet if you could build something that was larger? And if you had a half acre, it sounds like a lot of room to put that on, and I live on a half acre. One of the things that takes place on, where do you put it? Front yard, side yard? All you folks probably live in a pretty nice house. And the guy across the street wants to go to Sears and buy an $18 shed on sale, and he wants it put in his front yard right next to the garage so when he gets out his ATV with the plow on, he doesn't have to walk around to the back. He just want it that way. I should want it, want it that way in my, you know, in my neighborhood. So there's, there's a reason for doing these things. There just is. Uh, the ZDP permit that you gotta get, you gotta get that even if you're doing one in a residential area, okay? And the reason we do that, uh, with regional building, it's gotta be tied down. It's gotta have, it can have a slab floor. It's gotta be such so it's not gonna blow away and go through the, the building next door. There's things that has to be done. The engineering expense on that, 'cause, uh, planning director checked on that, is five to 700 bucks, top dollar, to get the engineering sign off on that. Okay? If you're gonna put up a building, you better put one up that's bigger, 120 square feet, 'cause that's not gonna hold a whole lot in doing that. So we, we had, as I say, two work sessions. We went through all this, and the only objection, objection we had was Mr. Good that came in. That's where I'm at on that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. DeVoe? Thanks for being here, John.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, no one else signed up? We are in public comment. Would anyone else like to weigh in on ordinance number 1300? Okay, if not, any of the questions from council? If not, we'll call for a motion to approve ordinance number 1300. Made by Mr. Carr.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
Um, so, so, uh, what we're looking at here, um, in this specific, uh, citizen's requirement is, nothing's cheap. It's, it, I, I, okay, so my question is, it, not just this property, but other ones. If somebody wanted to put a storage unit, is that restricted in the commercial zone? I mean, we have storage units all over the city. I, I wasn't aware...
Like mini warehouse?
Well, I mean, the warehouse, yeah, warehouse.
Mini warehouse is a specific zone district. So, yeah, you would have to comply with the matrix for mini warehouse. But every commercial property would be allowed to have an accessory building for the purposes of storage, for its own storage incidental to its own principal use.
I guess I was wondering about, in this particular case, commercial. So, so those kind of things aren't really accessory buildings at all?
That's a principal use.
Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Any question? Sally, uh, and Laura, you met with Jerry, and, and you think he understands all of the options that might be used? No?
I'm not sure he's really understood all the options. We even suggested that if it was a hardship, that he could go to the board of adjustment and get a variance as well. So there are multiple options, but I'm not sure he understood those.
All right.
Cool. I just wanted to add my support. It is appropriate for a city to have standards and designs with zone. These are not excessive. Uh, existing buildings are grandfathered in. Options to build bigger storage units under building permit guides and things of that nature is very appropriate, very appropriate. I just wanted to add that to the conversation, my support. It brings harmony and good construction practices to the city. I'm not trying to interfere with anybody's private property or anything else like that, but it makes sense. That's all I got to add.
Anybody else? Jerry, I'll say this. I, I feel your pain. Um, here's what I see for me. One person came forward, A, and B, more importantly to me, it seems like the city's very willing to work with you in any way they can. It's clear to me also that it's gonna cost you a little bit more money. I don't, I say a little bit. I don't know how much more. It's gonna cost you more money as a result of this, but my, you know, my approach would be if I were you, and this happens to pass, um, you know, work as closely with, as you can with Laura and Sally. I know they're always willing to do everything they can. Maybe the board of adjustments can make some adjustment. Who knows? There's other avenues, is the point. And so I just want to kind of let you know where I'm coming from. Anybody else? If not, we'll call for a motion to approve number, ordinance number 1300.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Sally?
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
And Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no new business tonight, and a couple of comments on items not on the agenda. We don't. So we'll move to reports, and we'll start with the mayor's report. And, start with Friday, April 7th, uh, the Keg &amp; Cork Craft Beer and Wine Tasting at the U-Pass Cultural Center from 6 to 9. I hear a lot about this event. I'm guessing there's gonna be a lot of people there. Seem to be very well publicized, and, uh, so this Friday from 6 to 9. Then Thursday, April 13th, from 5 to 7, the Chambers Spring Business Expo at the U-Pass Cultural Center. That usually sells out. Is it closed? Deb already has sold out. Lots of, lots of great opportunity there. And then Thursday, April 18th, from 5:30 to 7, the... And then Thursday, April 18th, from 5:30 to 7:00, the Chamber Business After Hours, this time at the Woodland Professional Building. And that's all I have. Bill?
Main Street is proceeding at their designated pace, and someday we'll get there. That's all I've got.
Good, thank you. Ken?
Just to remind everybody, the citywide cleanup in May, help me with the date.
May 20.
20, right. Sorry. Keep your eye out for that and volunteer and help while you can keep our city clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank everybody for participating. Have a wonderful night.
Thanks.
Nothing.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. No city attorney this evening, so David, what do you have for?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening, okay. We'll move on, comments on written correspondence. And if you'll bear with me, I've got one, and I wish I could pronounce her last name, but someone will help me with this. This comes from the Little Chapel Food Pantry.
We're gonna say Hesselberg.
Okay, good. And thank you for, thank you very much for the wonderful gift of $1,200 to the Little Chapel Food Pantry. This is from Community Investment. This will help us to finally be able to have a compressor installed in our walk-in cooler and enable us to provide more fresh produce and dairy products to our clients. I know your budget is tight this year, so thank you very much. And Ms. Hesselberg, the director, so thank you. I'm sorry, couldn't read that any better. Mr. Coy? Would you like to go next? You're signed up for number 12, so you're all ready to go.
Is this the appropriate spot? I thought that was items not on the agenda, you know, it's not.
You speaking about?
Item 12.
Okay. We're gonna adjourn to executive session?
Right, which I can't participate in. Do you take public comment on these things?
We can take it now if you'd like, or we can take it afterwards. Obviously, there's not gonna be any decisions made, but you're here now, and if you'd like to speak, you certainly can.
Thank you very much. Tanner Coy, 550 Allegheny Drive, Colorado Springs. It's the only item I signed up for, but I did want to say just very briefly, I'm very sensitive to Councilman Sanyer's concerns with the DDA Boundary Expansion, and I have been diligently researching TIF statute and regulation lately, and I have pages of calculations and mechanics on how the property tax administrator, the state dictates that TIF functions. And I believe there is widespread misunderstanding of the benefits and risks to other taxing authorities and how it works. So please consider me available to any of you at any time for further conversation. I would really enjoy engaging with you in that discussion to help better understand the effects. I also have an interest in the fire and ambulance and emergency responders and the services that are provided to the properties downtown. I, I take that very seriously, so I just wanted, wanted to say that.
I would like to take you up on your opportunity, on that opportunity to talk to you. And maybe in the very near future, we could get together and do so.
Look forward to that.
Thank you.
Regarding the upcoming executive session, I simply wish to remind the council that there are some very, very good people in this community who endured some unnecessary things and would likely speak volumes on this topic if given the opportunity to speak openly and plainly not in a public meeting with any of you. So just a reminder of some of those things as you contemplate the subject of your upcoming session. That's all from me.
I happen to agree with you as far as the public should have and hear. What is city business? I'm not a proponent of executive sessions, and I've never hit that from anything unless it is something that is legally binding and could cause legal action. And in all other situations, I believe everything should be done in the light of day, above table, and everyone participate. So ditto's back to you, because on that, I agree with you. There should be input from the community. But, you know, maybe in the future we'll be able to do that.
Well, good luck this evening, guys, and thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are on agenda item number 12, which pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, we will adjourn.
Get a motion.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402 specifically for the discussion of personnel matter regarding the city manager's evaluation.
So moved.
First, would you like to, second, John, would you like to take the second on that?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Sally?
Sanyer.
Appropriate. No.
Okay. Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, let's see, 5-1, thank you.
Great, thanks, Sally. So we're gonna adjourn upstairs, and we will come down when we're done. If anybody would like to be here, we will finish this meeting as soon as we're done in executive session. Thank you all for being here.